From the United States of America and through the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call order, vote call, strike on my right.
Councilmember Josh Erne.
Mayor Jimmy John King.
Councilperson Craig Anderson.
Councilperson Jeremiah Logan.
Approval of tonight's agenda.
Um, all your formal changes should have been added already. Um, Sean and I will be tag teaming on a couple items, uh, just dealing with the snow removal, streets, sidewalks, um, things like that. So we'll visit with you between the two of us in each of us.
Nothing bad from up here. Looking for motion to approve. Motion to approve. We have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Full, that carries. Now into the council meeting minutes, uh, February 12th, 2019. Close in. See if there's anything he's changing. If not, look for a motion on that. Motion to approve minutes. Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed. That also carries. That'll take us to the council panel with the additional listings in there. If you have any questions, we'll direct them to the county bill.
County bill?
Mm-hmm. Bernie, maybe you'd rather come in.
You've got my list right here.
Is that why it's running crayon?
(laughing).
Just kidding. Just kidding.
No questions or comments or anything? Look for motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And that also carries. That'll take us under motions of general business tonight. First item, under motions of general business, we'll be hearing from our sheriff, Kevin Ferguson.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, I wanted to try to make sure that I got down here again this year. Last year I did not, and part of that was because it was election year and I didn't want somebody to take it the wrong way and use it inappropriately. So, um, just first and foremost, some things I just wanted to mention and I wanted to jump on it right off the bat. Um, the storm and the stuff from this last weekend was crazy. Uh, taxed our folks tremendously. We declared a state of emergency for the county mainly to try to get state support, which, uh, we got in the form of more troopers coming down out of natural area, but we did not, uh, get the help and support of the National Guard, which is, uh, if they would've got here, it would've been probably close to midnight. By the time we got down here, it would've been different because all the other equipment that was more centrally located was already over in the Elbert Lady Freeway and down in Silicon and western economy areas. So, um, kind of were on our own and DNR helped out hugely. Uh, Sparkville, uh, Snowmobile Club, their skippers were out with their, um, track, uh, trailer machine and, uh, just a fantastic effort. And then, uh, the bottom line, the real true girls in this thing were, uh, public works folks, uh, at all levels. Uh, you know, there's still a lot of work to be done. There's no question about that. They put in a lot of work and, um, but the most exciting thing that we talked about a little bit today was that there was no fatalities that I'm aware of throughout all of southeast Minnesota, which meant several, mean several things. One, uh, people heated the mornings. It was those that didn't and they ended up in the ditch or the snowbank somewhere. So, uh, justice prevailed there because probably the right terminology. And, uh, on the bottom, you know, I think nobody, nobody got in a situation where someone walked away from the car and was found and frozen because it was so brutally cold as well as that. So, a lot of really great things to go around and we're going to mention that in the folks' just type of the folks who call the courts. Um, update on our office. We currently have 185 of will. On Monday, we will have 185, uh, people in the office. It's, uh, broken down into 90 folks on the law enforcement side and 95 on the detention side. Um, we're adding in our budget this year from the county, new clerical staff person who's been taking care of a lot of things on the detention side that are related to, uh, training records. And we only had one clerical staff all these years on the detention side, and this is going to take care of a lot of training, information, records, as well as, uh, support our gun permits, which, uh, just continues to be a huge undertaking in our office. We have one full-time person that, gosh, she's probably about 95% on gun permits and registrations and/or, uh, guns purchased. And then another guy that goes in about a quarter of the time doing that and a listening will help out as well. It's, it's really going to be a positive step. The other person that we added this year through the budget is actually a half person. We've had a half detective working, uh, part-time or retired detective, Dave Riffus, whom you probably remember or know David. He's finally retiring for good, uh, coming up the end of the month. And, uh, David is, uh, I've been working the last several years in a half-time position with adult protection and adult fraud and government abuse, uh, which, uh, when we got into that, it was a paid grant and paid position actually through our community services, uh, department in the county, uh, with adult protection. And, uh, well, David got into it as most times David finds things, uh, he discovers and works and finds a lot more than we were expecting. And it's now grown to the point where we need a full-time person doing a full, uh, job. So, uh, David can smile and realize that it's going to take one full-time person to take care of what he did in half the time. So, um, he used to always have a saying that he wouldn't solve crime until it was overtime, but, uh, he didn't do any overtime. He's running a man with his time. So, he did a lot of good work in the former. Um, and he was my FDO when I started. So, uh, that was an experience hell of a forget. Um, the next thing I just want to mention, this is a contract here with the city. Um, so at the end of this year, we have to look forward to 20 and 21. Um, and just a reminder, as far as the, the primary public safety contract, uh, for the 24-hour service, um, that contract was, uh, in 2018, went up 4% and then in 2019, went up 2%. And then the cops position, that Ustrillo's position was low increase in 2018 and a point five increase in 2019. And the reason for the various numbers, just to remind you is, um, when Terry Releski and I started looking at a lot of these things four years ago, uh, we realized that there was different totals in all of our cities. It was really unusual even though we're basically supplying the same service. And so, the difference is there basically to equalize the contracts in each of the cities. So everybody's paying basically the same rates. Um, so we'll, uh, talking about that with the bill and others later this year and be ready for the 2020 and 21, uh, contracts. And with that, this tentative this year, we're still very interested in, uh, adding to that with a school liaison deputy. Um, I was contacted again, it's over you recently by Concerned Citizen and, uh, we're very interested in that and remain that way. I mean, we're ready to open, openly talk that possibility with the school district as well as the city. Um, and a lot of that position from our point of view would be a dare, a dare deputy, which is sort of a very folk, uh, primary focus in our office. Uh, drills and exercises that Deputy Strillo has been filling some of those roles that we feel like could do a lot more with that. Uh, supportive counseling and, uh, in a lot of different ways. Uh, our offices aren't trained counselors, but, uh, it's amazing how 22 will deputies ask how to be a parent here, how to parent kids and stuff on your first week out on the road. So we learn real quickly how to, how to at least manage and facilitate, uh, prices in people's lives. Uh, as well as other committees and other safety initiatives. And for the city, um, there'd be another person that'd be available that knows the kids and is available during summer months, which we've seen in our, in the Yoda environment is a, uh, a huge plus for the folks that are out there and the kids and things that's going on in the school and the snow year. And then some of that stuff rolls right over into, uh, the summertime. And that connection with the kids while they're outside of school in a positive way is a huge benefit too. Um, as far as our toll division, uh, you know, the hours are, are continuing to be the same 24/7 for the most part. Um, but the city, uh, reached huge benefits in our city. I think anyone would look at it and say, wow, um, with our investigation support, the additional 24/7 support. And there's a, uh, clear call that requires a worthy one deputy down here. And then, um, we can bring in, uh, several different deputies. And even this weekend with Blizzard, uh, we had, uh, sent out an I am responding message to all our deputies on the license side and told them to, uh, get ready. It was getting crazy out there. There was potentially up to 100 and it turned out to be probably close to 200 cars that were off the road at some point in time needing some kind of support just in our county. Um, and who knows what was going on in the city. We were just trying to keep track of how the state was calling for help. And, uh, yeah, we were able to notify our deputies and four of them came in and continued to help do the rescues and searches that they did right up until probably about eight o'clock, nine o'clock, but then last one or more. Um, so that's just another example of, uh, those are not any extra costs in that sense to, to someone that has the contract. Our field training officers, when we have them down here, they're riding double with that four of the deputies on the street, um, today or this week being trained and two more that'll start next week, as I mentioned earlier, uh, as well as the administration and all the squad car class equipment and all that stuff is more combined by the county. So, um, other than that, I don't have any real big additional things. There's a lot of conversation. You might have seen last week, um, that the county board purchased the Seneca. Um, what happens, uh, why does that involve the sheriff's office? Um, well, we have property here. We, we use buildings in that fairgrounds area and, uh, there's a lot of dominos that they fall and, uh, affect where we put our, uh, seize vehicles, where our sets of service people are, um, and where our maintenance, uh, garages. We have a maintenance facility there where we do all our squad car bills because it's cheaper for our people to put things together. Plus they get done the right way or the way we want them to be done. And plus we have to have a place to store all our specialty vehicles, like the, uh, track vehicle that we had out this weekend, the ATV that was helping rescue some folks and hit some difficult places, as well as our boats and, you know, all the other crazy stuff we have to have included in this. So, um, we're really interested into what the board ends up deciding to do with all those facilities and what they plan to do with fairgrounds and with, uh, Seneca foods. Um, and on the other hand, we've been on their table for a long time, the completion of the public safety training center, which is a great facility. I think some of you have been out there. Um, but it's lacking one thing. It's a building with classrooms, offices and bathrooms. Right now, even today, uh, I was talking to a couple of our new guys and, and a couple of detention staff who, uh, need to go qualify at the range. And, uh, so they'll go up there probably next week and, you know, they'll take care of business somewhere else before and, uh, use the facilities at the range. It's not comfortable yet. Uh, we still struggle with that. So we're really pushing hard to, uh, get the county board to find a way to support that. And that way, our hopes are a highest level we can. So...
That Seneca purchase wouldn't affect the ELC, would it, or the backup dispatch, definitely?
It may. It may.
We know your garage is on that, but...
It may.
That's all considered part of that same plot of, well...
Well, 1421, that building where the Mercy Operator Center, the backup dispatches, um, that's, that's in the gray area right now. It just really depends on how the DMC wants to do or decides to do in the county with the, that Seneca property.
Right.
Because they want to make that a mobility hub, as they call it. And what a mobility hub, as I understand it, we've been deep into these conversations, but a mobility hub is a place obviously where people can drive to. And then they'll have a train or what they call a bus circulator, which will drive constantly into the downtown from that location, uh, every five minutes and just keep dragging and dropping people up, picking them up. And I don't know if it's a 24/7, but I've heard talk of that. Uh, then at the same time, they would have shops there or, um, some convenience opportunities for people to, uh, make that quick stop and get some milk before they head home or whatever they want to do. I, who knows what they're going to come up with for this place. So it could be a huge footprint at this time. Maybe you are the Seneca and of course they're going to save the, you're a foreign tower. So we can't forget that. We make sure that's on record as well. So, um, it may take 1421 out of it. Before they bought Seneca foods, the mobility hub was going to go, uh, as I understood it, one of the main plans was going to go right there over the top of the south, um, uh, we call it the South Priestie, the maintenance facility, 1421, and even possibly the 4H building and all those beautiful oak trees that are there. Um, but now I don't know what's going to happen. We'll see. It's Seneca coming into the picture on that property. Who knows what's going to happen. We're all anxious. Some of the board is having a retreat to, uh, it was either today or yesterday or today or tomorrow. But anyway, they're having a retreat and that's their one big focus is trying to figure out where they're going to go with the followings. One other thing with the training center too, and the Commissioner Flynn brought this up recently to me, it was part of another meeting, but he brought it up, uh, and said that he had heard that the small city fire departments, uh, weren't using the training facility because it was too expensive. Um, and I looked up some figures. Number one, the small city fire departments are not charged to use the facility except whatever they use in consumables. Meaning if they burn propane, if they're light departments and fire tower, they pay for that. And last year, Stroop paid a hundred and seventy dollars to come up there and train. Um, the other nice part about the training facility that's being added on this year is Rochester Fire Department is donating the fire truck and decommissioned to the training site. And that should really help the, uh, small cities because that's been one of the challenges is they don't want to have to bring apparatus up there to, uh, you know, leave the, the city behind. Uh, now there may actually be a fire truck, uh, right there on site that they can use for training and train small portions or different groups and different times. Plus we're adding, um, uh, some new conics boxes, which is basically a quite small row of cars, a pool of cars, and they're going to stack them and put them in a, I'm not even sure how it's going to look when it's done, but they're going to stack them and use them so that there will be ladders and steps and different things in there that only fire departments will be able to use to fight fires and burn wood and mattresses and oxygen and garbage stuff, uh, that they get into, but also, uh, law enforcement will be able to use as a way to, uh, do some interest researches and move them around and take places and stuff. So it's going to be a hundred. Really need to add on both of those things with the fire trucks as well as, as that. So if you've heard questions about cost and challenges involved with training facility from fire departments, uh, it really isn't, uh, and shouldn't be a drain on them other than just getting out there. Uh, it would always be a challenge. It is for everyone. Uh, we'll have to keep adding much to that. Maybe interesting. Anything else?
You have some news?
You guys got into, uh, any idea what we're going to be looking at for increase at all yet or not?
No, no. Well, uh, it, the idea from what I remember a couple of years ago was first let's balance it. And, uh, we've got a new finance director at the county. Um, so we'll consult with him. Um, you know, I can't imagine it to be anything out of the ordinary because nothing's changed. The main thing was getting more in line with the increases that the deputies have on their annual salaries. Um, so that is, that is covered in that position. And, um, so generally that's about a 3% or, or so that they get out of what their contract calls for this year. I'm not going to put Mike on the spot to you also. Um, I can't imagine it would be, you know, shouldn't be anything in line. We'll communicate that. Chief Deputy Releski will be right on top of that and, uh, you guys.
We've got our retreat coming up, uh, second week of March. And, uh, I'm sure we'll be discussing, I guess I should ask first if you could stay a few minutes when you're done because we'll be doing a discussion about school. I want input from everybody.
Sure.
I must get it done up there. Because we'll be asking you to probably help if we decide to do something other than what's up there. Um, we've had the discussion before, Kevin. I've asked the question and you've kind of answered, but I, I would ask you again, before our retreat, if you could, uh, somehow break it down, send me a list of, you know, when you talk about the benefits, the extra benefits we get, uh, contract and all that and all the extra we get, like when you're talking about this storm and stuff. But I mean, as being county members and county taxpayers, you would have sent guys down to help out if we needed that too. But I'd just like this time to see the, it gives me a better idea when people ask me and stuff to, that what are we getting for this contract and so, you know, we talked...
You give attention to the numbers of deputies and the hours?
No, no. You, you always talk, the, the stuff, I've asked the question before, well, we pay county taxes. You'd come here for a crime anyhow, correct?
Well, it depends. It depends. State statute requires us to come to investigate, to felony crimes, but to do your ticketing for...
Oh, that, yeah, that, 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 okay. I'm talking about, that's what we're talking about because the question gets raised every year, every year. It'll get raised again at the retreat about when are we going to start our own force? When's the time for that? And I understand what you're saying about that, but what I'm saying is if we need somebody to write tickets, I understand what you're saying, but I mean, any of the other crime, we're talking about felonies, uh, home invasions, any of this stuff, you'd be done here for that if we called, correct? But I realize we get some benefit for the extra we pay because we pay quite a little bit extra, but that's why I'd like to know a little more of what are we getting above and beyond. I've, you know, before we've talked about this, if I lived in Pleasant Grove, I get a certain amount of protection, correct? Well, I get that certain amount of stir for what, what's the above and beyond I get for this extra contract when people ask me. You, you know what I'm getting at?
I think so. We could talk a little bit.
Not, not, not just the 24/7, just...
Twenty, I hear you. The 20th of March.
Yeah.
20th of March?
Yeah, I think you just give me a list or something or email something back before then.
Well, I'll try to do something a little quicker. So if it's not exactly what you're looking for, we can have some time.
Because you know what I'm saying? We've, we've had the discussion. We've talked about the 24/7. I realize we have the 24/7, but we get the calls and it seems like we're on shift change or whatever. And I got to explain that to people and stuff too. So I mean...
Sure.
I think the big question that didn't get answered last year that got asked directly to Terry was, or two years ago, or whenever it was that we did that.
I think it was two years ago.
Two years ago.
Down in the scene?
You know, and it was, yeah, it's just the big question is always, why should Sparkville pay for 24/7? Byron wouldn't have or doesn't. I mean, what, does it be, we must have somebody out for the extra four or six hours? And you can argue either way, Terry just answered in Terry fashion. It was very bold and straightforward and didn't have anything with it. So I think people are curious about that. We did get, I think Mike or, did you print up all those numbers?
Yep.
So that was great to look through all that stuff. We are busier here. There is, I mean, we, there is a little bit busier, but I, breaking down the numbers, I can see some of it. Like we have 380 more medicals than Byron. I think a lot of that's because of the senior center. Could be, you know, I don't know, but there's some different things there. I think that's what we're looking at, but otherwise I think, uh, you know, I, I don't, do not want to start our own police department at all.
I'm not saying that either, but I mean, you get five of the, you know, as the contract raises, we, we pay a pretty sizable contract. You have to admit that. Which I understand, I understand contracts come on.
This year, your contract, even just ballpark, is about 500, uh, 550,000, even a little bit more than that.
Yeah. Plus we pay county taxes, which I understand is, plus we pay extra for Mike too, right?
And that's including Mike.
That's including Mike, alright.
So to start your own police department, you'd be looking at probably, I think it's at least, uh, one, 25 million.
I understand that. We tell people that all the time.
And everybody would work here for a year and a half and then go work for you guys instead. So we'd always have the newest guy. You know what I mean? It's just our goals.
Rick is my favorite job.
(laughing).
I understand all that part of it. And I'm not, I'm not trying to use this as a, I'm saying we're going to do that, but we get asked that. We'll get asked that again this year. We just get asked. It's no different than the discussion we have with township and all fire contracts. I just need some answers to give people when they ask.
Well, uh...
Because I can, I can say we got 24/7 and that's all I can say because I don't know what else we get besides 24/7. And they'll come right back at me and say, well, I don't know if state kind of sheriffs out there 24/7 anyhow? Isn't that part of their job?
It is.
Yeah.
But they're not going to get the full service that they would get, that you get now with that contract. That's the difference.
I know.
We'll, we'll give you the state statute that spells it out as what your normal service is and, uh, what everyone's entitled to as far as that goes, but there's a lot that you do not get without the contract.
Well, we need to see that.
And you didn't have a police department. You just went without it. You don't want to spend that extra money. Um, what would you get just on the basic services? And, and I think most people will find that, uh, unacceptable.
That'd be perfect. That's what we'd like to see.
Maybe you could divide it. Like if, if the township would generally see this type of service, uh, the city gets this with our, is there a way you can show that comparison?
Do you have contracts with Dover?
City of Dover? Yes.
So all small cities have a separate contract?
Very tiny, very, very small. It's like an hour in the daytime and two hours at night from the state. So, yeah. So when they're, when we're not out there, I mean, they have a contract, uh, so we do respond there and we'll do most anything over there because there is a contract. Um, but again, it's, the, the response times are going to be a lot different, um, as opposed to here. And, uh, the population is extremely different over there.
I understand.
So there is, uh, there's a lot of differences and I don't know if it's necessarily right to compare one city to the other. There's, um, I know the city of Sparkville all the, the other cities don't have, but may require extra services and, uh, you know, yeah, what kind of community, what kind of community do you want?
Oh, I understand that.
That's, that's...
You know, I'm not trying to go there, Kevin. I need answers from people when they ask me. You know, I got to tell them too, what they is. And I know what you're talking about. We always hear about that too, but isn't that the affordable housing the county's pushing for it? We're going to see all of it when we eventually get down there?
Um, uh, in part. Um, and that's what, you know, we, we've talked about in relation to the city of Rochester. We've talked about it with another thing, uh, to help the River Bend Agreement. Um, what that is, is the agreement between the city and the county and how we do public safety and how the government center is run and so on and so forth. And one of the, uh, things that we look at in relation to all that is dispatch services and who's consuming more of the, the dispatch time in a sense. And, um, one of the things we've talked about is the DMC to most of us is, you know, on this destination medical center. Uh, I call it density in the middle of the city, um, because that's exactly what they're getting. And when you have more density, you have more calls for service of all kinds because not everybody gets along. And, uh, so there will be those spikes in a sense and growing pains as we, we will probably more be more aligned with. Uh, and that's the same in, in every community. As soon as you put up a multi-wheeling or something else, you have people living closer together. They hear each other. They hear when they're not happy and, uh, and so they get those calls. And, uh, when you have people living that much closer together, you have more likelihood of that happening. And it's not, it may be hard for some people to understand, but it's fact. Um, you know, just going to see that stuff. So, um, again, we'll, we'll do the best we can. We'll communicate with both of you, one of you, and make sure we get to them.
Are you open to a subsequent workshop with you or son or staff, maybe after they get done?
Yeah, that was one of my other questions. I had a question was being asked if we were going to have that one. There's, there's been a collaborative meeting with the scene, Sparkville and Sparkville District.
We do that about three times a year, four times?
Uh, tried, we try it for spring and fall.
So if you have one of those, we'd be happy to...
We have one coming up this year.
...talk to all, all three organizations as well. So I think that's a good, a good viable organization and kind of things that we do together, you know, we get to chat. So, uh, we'd be open to try to work with that and with that as well. I have March 20th on, on here and Terry and I'll get to work on it anyway in the morning.
I appreciate it.
Um, we'll, uh, get back to you. Anything else?
Any other questions, Michelle?
Well, thank you.
Bye.
I could get you to hand in every couple of them. Appreciate that too. Alright, our next item is going to be superintendent Salfers.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Thank you for inviting us to come. I'd like to introduce Dave McEnroy. He is our Bonner Elementary Principal and he's in his second year in the building. He's doing a great job. Uh, before we talk about the presentation that we have, I want to express our gratitude and appreciation to the city, county and township road crews. Um, they did an excellent job and have been every winter event that we have in getting the roads cleared for safe passage for our students and our staff to school and home. Also, I want to mention that tomorrow is school bus driver appreciation day. And so we really value our bus drivers. They carry our most precious cargo to and home school in a safe manner. And, um, we can't say enough about the great job that they do. Also, I want to mention that tomorrow is School Bus Driver Appreciation Day, and so, we really value our bus drivers, they carry our most precious cargo to and from school in a safe manner, and we can't say another bum did a great job today. So, what we're doing tonight is Administrator Schimmel asked us to come and talk about before and after school traffic at the Bonner Elementary School. And I'm gonna turn this over to Zane, he's gonna do most of the talking, he has the most direct knowledge of what's going on out there, and I'll jump in whenever there might be something for me to add.
Great. Thank you once again for the invitation to come here, and I just want to echo what Superintendent Selfers said, you're so appreciative of the city of Surville, also County Sheriff Department, I mean, the work that you guys have done the last couple days, and particularly, every other day as well, you know, clearing the roads, helping our students get to school, something that's obviously critical to us, but we, we just want to send our genuine appreciation for that. So, Administrator Schimmel asked us to come here and kind of do a presentation, so I went and just kind of walked you through, we want to be as objective as we can here. The first item we have here is a blow up over Bonner, I just want to give everyone to have an idea of exactly how we have it worked out now. If you notice in lower right eighth corner, this is where our student pickup and drop off is, we do have our staff and visitor parking.
The top button is always there.
Okay, thank you. So, right here is our staff parking, so, at the end of the day of the school, our students come out here, and this is where they're actually getting picked up. Our biggest concern, or the city's concern, is right along here, because we're getting a lot of backup, so as people are coming through here, you know, we may have some backup along Sixth Street. As you notice, we actually, during the day, we have a full fire lane all the way around the building, which is, once again, that critical piece as far as the city's safety. Here's where we actually have our bus pickups, and so, once again, I think this just kind of represents where our building, how it's laid up, and how we do drop offs and pickups. Any questions on this particular site, right here? Okay, can we go to the next item, please?
Can we, I just backed up really quick, yes.
Right now, there's parking allowed, and so, when these parents pick up people on here, and Mayor and I have been up there personally, the backup doesn't allow any transit traffic or commuter traffic through that area, and so, that's what's become difficult. Some neighborhood folks that just want to go home, have general accessibility, or may deal with emergency, there's about a twenty-minute, half hour on certain occasions, depending on how early parents get there, that just ties this totally up. And so, then the only outlet, like the one called Zack, the only outlet is on Sixth, otherwise, the only access point you'd have to go around One oh six, down the county line road, which heads off down those streets.
Okay, and just like Administrator Schimmel mentioned here, we just kind of want to give a blow up here, so here's Bonner right here, Sixth Street, as you can see, and like Mr. Schimmel identified, you know, it's very difficult that if we do have backup here, that it's very difficult for these people to get out, once again, to get access here as well, so. Do we have next item, please? Okay, so I just want to give you some demographics and some ideas as far as where we're at for the day. We have about five hundred students at Bonner, four hundred and eighty-six as of today. I have thirty-seven teachers, I have an additional approximately forty employees, we have some attendants staff, visitors, vendors, about thirty-five a day. So, really what I'm trying to show here is that we have a very busy school, we have people coming in, we have people coming out. Our school hours run from eight o'clock to two fifty in the afternoon, hours of operation, seven thirty to eight o'clock. So, as far as our drop offs go, we have students drop off as early as seven thirty, they're technically not supposed to be dropped off until about seven forty, but we do allow that time. And then, our building actually stays over, open until four o'clock. Do we have any examples? Okay, so last year, we had, so, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, our morning drop off, I actually have two parent professionals who work out there. So, the process is, as cars come through, they pull up to the curb, we go up, open the door, students come out, we shut the door, the parents are on their way. After school pickup, last year, I had two people taking care of the pickups, I've increased that to five, okay? A lot of that is in response to trying to move the lines along. We took some data, I collected numbers, so in the morning, we have an average of about a hundred and ten people come through dropping their kids off, that's about a fifth of our total population. In the afternoon, we dismiss at two fifty, all our students are picked up by three o'clock. So, as far as the students leave the building till the time we clear them all out, it's a total of ten minutes. Now, like Mr. Schimmel said, we do have parents who occasionally show up a little bit early in anticipation for dismissal, and so, that can cause a little bit of backup too. After school pickups, we have an average of twenty-seven vehicles come through there. We also have an additional group of parents who actually stop, they park, they walk down and pick up their children, and then they walk them back up to their cars. Now, you might ask the question, how can we have more than a hundred in the morning and only twenty-seven in the afternoon, and how do we do that? Well, in the morning, I would say typically, it takes about fifteen to twenty seconds for a vehicle to pull up, the exit the students, and then they're on their way. So, in the morning, it's a much more continuous process, whereas in the afternoon, it slows down just a little bit. Okay, some of the things that we've, we, I know that this has been a problem since I first took my office. From historically speaking, I think this has always kind of been a problem, as our school population rises, as our residents move farther and farther to the east, I think we're gonna have continued concerns as far as the traffic flow. We have reached out to parents, we have sent email, we have sent Skyler messages, thank you so much, I apologize. We've put it in newsletters, we're really encouraging parents to learn how to drop their kids off and how to pick them up. We've also sent out emails as far as being considerate of the residents of Surville, making sure that we move along in an early fashion, and making sure that everyone is aware of, of the concerns here. I apologize, so, obviously, our number one concern is student safety, we want to make sure the kids get in and out efficiently. We are concerned about the residents and other people traveling on Sixth Street. I do understand, I fully and readily admit, that if you get Sixth Street at a certain time of day, it's gonna be an inconvenience. Typically, from quarter to eight, till eight o'clock in the morning, there's a possibility of running into some slowdowns. If you come between twenty-two to three o'clock, there's a possibility of having some backup on that. We feel that we've been very reactive, and we've been very responsive, we've tried to reach out to our parents, we've tried to be very sympathetic and empathetic towards our residents. We want to listen, we want to get suggestions, and once again, we really want to make sure that we're working on the same page and being aligned in the best interest of our students. Next one. So, once again, we are very aware of the local concerns residents have, we do want to be responsive. It is our desire to work with city of Surville to arrive at solutions that benefit all our stakeholders. Our student safety is our number one priority, this includes students who are picked up, students who are bused, and students who walk home. One of the things that we were asked is potentially looking for potential solutions, Mr. Schimmel kind of outlined exactly where some of our problems lie. We're not city administrators, this is just our perspective, and so, these are just some ideas that we kind of brainstorm. Parking on one side of Sixth Street, you know, parking is a concern, we do have quite a few people who work at Bonner, and so, parking is something that we are always looking for. If we have parking on one side of Sixth Street, my concern about that is you may see some of that parking going into the residential areas. Another one is making the Sixth Street one-way during those certain hours, that's a possibility, but that would take a huge amount of education on our part and your part, to make sure that everyone understands. The opening of cold sack for knee grass, that was yours. Once again, that access for Highway sixty-three over Mostland Motor County Road, I know that one is another one that's really bushy, but once again, we're just trying to brainstorm what we can. I know one idea that had come up was not having parking on Sixth Street, and having a through lane on that, and I'm not, I don't think that's a bad idea. Once again, that's just gonna be, it's gonna be a minimization of parking, and so, that's something that we would have to consider too. So, that's what I have right now, and so, I guess we'll open up to questions, concerns, what are your thoughts, what can we do to assist, thoughts?
Playground, we're talking about putting some parking dumbles on it, on the backside of Bonner. The north side.
The playground here.
Talking about sharing a driveway and everything, putting it part of the driveway, so you can get the back here, dumble behind Bonner.
Along the south side or back to?
Yeah.
There was talk about putting a drive on the east end to access the playground, dumble there.
Where our water tower is, just before Belinda came on, Dave, or Superintendent Selfers. We talked about doing a joint project where we would actually put a driveway to the back, where that asphalt used to be playground is really broken up. And one of the ideas was resurface it to become staff parking. And then, we would share the driveway, and then just staff could go there to alleviate a bunch of staff parking up front, which then allows more, if this is a trend, that parents doing the pickups, drop offs, gives you more off-street possibilities for this backup, if we're gonna deal with it. The other thing, it seems like, from the history I get from people, that ever since the fire lane got, you were advised not to use that anymore, then that's where this issue maybe has become more prevalent. And I don't know if there's any way that that can be opened up for this type of use as another option, as we're looking to try to get more people off the street area, so we can accommodate the through traffic through there.
So, when, and I wasn't a part of the discussions on putting the drive on the east side there, that parking, the staff and visitor parking in the blue in the front of the building was just redone. So, I was wondering if that other project was a consideration, how that would have tied into the project that's done there, because that was done in the summer before I came.
Yeah, we probably have doubled this parking right here.
Yeah.
And that was last summer, so.
Summer before.
Summer before.
So, that, that'd be one question, and how that would all flow together.
We, we've actually talked about using our well driveway as the entrance and backup and through there to access the back part, so it would actually be on city program.
And so, if we, you know, moving, moving parking out of the front of the building, where that blue area is, may allow more parents to park in that blue area.
Even if you have to do a corral type.
It might get more parents to park there. The fire lane is a concern, it's a very narrow, it's like an alley, and if we have parking or allow that to be a through drive, the students that cross that area is a concern. So, you can see where we have the crosswalks at the beginning and the end of the block there. Students getting to those crosswalks need to go across that area, and so, if there's through traffic, that becomes a safety issue, and how do we make sure that students are gonna be okay crossing that area? We also have moved our buses, so the buses come on the west side of the building in that green and orange area that you see on the left, or the right side, and so, that bus area used to be in the front of the building. The buses used to come in the front of the building, not on the side. And so, having traffic trying to come into where the buses come in, you know, if traffic's gonna go through the fire lane, out to the west, they're gonna come right into where the buses are coming into that parking lot. So, logistically, I don't know how that will all come together. But I mean, if, if there are solutions there that could be had, we're willing to look at them. The most difficult challenge we have is, we can educate parents, we can inform parents, but we cannot regulate them on SIS. The only time we can regulate traffic is once they enter our parking lots.
Well, you can hire deputies to sit out there and regulate it if you had to. And if we said that, just like we do for people that have extracurricular activities, and there's certain things where the, it's required that they hired county staff in order to patrol the area, that could be an issue with you guys, and you try to educate the parents, and we can say that you gotta foot the bill to hire the deputies to be out there, which is not ideal. Ultimately, well, let me back up, and let me just say, first of all, you guys' communication, Bill was nice enough to send us the whole email string of all this, and I had a chance to review it all, you guys have really stepped up, in my opinion. And Lord, I know, because Lord knows, I know from having an eighth grade student, you're a good communicator, because I've heard your voice three out of five days for the last three and a half weeks. I mean, honestly, you really get the message out, and you, you guys' way of doing it is effective, and just looking at the timelines of when the complaints come into the city, along with when they've reached out to you, and you, you guys have put those blasts out to the parents, they do get it, and they, they lay off for a while, and then, of course, their natural habitat comes back, or natural human desire to be lazy and do it their way and not care about others, comes in and they park wherever they want and stop where they want. My understanding of this area, and I don't, I don't live very far from there, but I think that the, the, the most obvious answer is to get rid of parking on the south side of the street, which would be eastbound at Sixth Street, in the morning, you could even post it at some point, which would be a city thing, I believe, or maybe county, because it's a county road.
County.
No parking from whatever time in the morning, seven to eight, or whatever it may be, and from two to three. If you had some staff that needed to park out there, they could run out and move their car if need be, frankly, I'd rather have them park on Tower Court in front of somebody else's house than on Sixth Street and cause all this. If, if, as long as that parking area was open, even if they lined up down the middle to make a left turn, people, people could still get by. And coming the other way, it's not an issue, because people, there's enough room for people to park, and rarely is anybody dumb enough to actually just stop in that lane. I mean, I'm not gonna put it past them, I've been a cop for twenty years, so I know that it happens. Ultimately, if we could just open that up somehow, and it's gonna take everybody's work on it, and eventually, it's gonna have to be, did you guys say in order to repaint it and redo all that stuff, you'd have to repave basically to redo the lanes, or?
No.
So, we could repaint it.
They would grind it off, they'd repaint it as a three lane with one side parking, and a continuous left turn lane, which would help during the.
I think at some point, that's, that's actually a really good solution, obviously, it can't happen for this year, so this year, and, and again, I'm not trying to throw a bill at you guys with the county guys, but I, it, it's not, if, you don't have a, you don't have a school liaison that you can set out there, unfortunately. And Deputy Strillo is tied, he could probably spend a day or two or, you know, check on it, but again, that's real hard, and as you guys know, these guys are under stress from us to do all these other things too, but and that's where you end up in a situation like the city pays for these guys to come down and work for our events, you know, so much for our.
I think from the district's perspective, every dollar we spend on something like that is coming right out of the classroom.
Well, you know, we could play that game all day long, though, and I realize that they say that, and I know that you have to answer to them, they're just, their budget's a heck of a lot bigger than ours, and we have a, we have a governor that's gotta fight tooth and nail to up all that stuff, and there's money in there for school safety already, whether, they're, they're trying to get more, which I understand, which should go towards a liaison officer, but that's another argument another day.
So, but, the concern for the district would be allocating resources for an officer to sit there for an hour, when it's parents who maybe aren't adhering to traffic laws.
I agree with you, but, but it's ultimately your guys' school that's causing, that's the beginning of the problem. So, that's where we all have to work together in this, we can post it, we can try to ask for some help and get people out there, but ultimately, if your communications with your, the parents of the kids at your school, if they don't get it, you know, I don't know how we do it, unless you have staff, your, some of your people that are out there, and they're just standing there saying, like, the crosswalk people, hey, you can't park, but we all know how that'll go too, then, they're gonna be like,
Yeah, because you don't have a board.
Screw you, you can't, you can't do anything to me, I, I understand that, it's a really tough situation.
Already on SIS.
But you can still move, I understand that, you can't ticket anybody, but there's nothing to stop anyone from saying, hey, by the way, you know, you can't park here, right? As long as it's posted, you can't park here, most people are actually gonna adhere to anybody that's working for the school, volunteering for the school, most people will move on, there are gonna be some that would be, screw you, I, you know, it's, I get that. I, it's not an easy answer, but we need something temporarily, at least till the end of the school year, I don't know how long it lasted, the last time you guys sent out, did you send it out in December last time? So, last month, one?
Last time, I, I haven't checked in eight on that, so, I think, I haven't even, I think we sent it one out, so.
And it's not even that many cars, the numbers that you just did, it's, it blows me away that this is this big of a problem, I can't.
Well, that was an average on that, I gotta tell you, I didn't sit there enough to take an average, but the day Bill and I sat there, I guarantee it was. Well, that was an average on that. I gotta tell you, I didn't sit there enough to take an average, but the day Bill and I sat there, I guarantee it was more than 27 cars moving out.
In the afternoon?
I guarantee that by.
Morning's not as bad as afternoon, is it?
It's a longer period of time and they're not.
Well, they're trickling in because people are dropping them off. They wait for one big barrage to come at the end.
That day, the last time we sat there, they were actually backed up from Fifth to where they turned in to pick up. You had cars laying all the way around your arrows. There was cars all the way around and they lined up all the way down that street. And just to aggravate everybody, you had a couple of them sitting there making their left-hand turn blocking both lanes.
Jesus.
And it, it's a difficult situation. I mean, I don't know how the district can take responsibility for parent behavior.
Well, I'm not asking, I'm just asking for input from everybody involved this before we just make the decision and make it difficult for everybody to pick up their children.
Understood. Um, it's, it's a challenge.
The last people I got calls from that last time I had Bill contacting, wasn't city residents. It was rural district residents trying to come in from off, just out in that area. And they don't feel like they need to go clear down the county line either, come in yet for me either when there's a two lane road all the way through. I just want you to understand that. We're not just saying it's always cities people calling and complaining.
Oh, understood. And it's difficult that, um, the way the neighborhood was planned, there's no more e, there's no other egress from that area. So I don't know if that's the school's fault or the city planner's fault.
We're not looking for any fault. We're not looking to put fault. So you gotta understand, when that was built, it was just like Mary Kay. That's all there was. That was all farm land across the road, beside the road, down the road, it was all farm. And it's grown up since then. So it's just one of them situations that's evolved.
And it's great when you have kids in school to have egress only to the school. And, but now the neighbors have aged and they no longer have kids in schools.
That's exactly right. That's the problem, you know, and we've got, yeah. And it duck, it was bad that day, it was bad now. The cul-de-sac and the one pretty across from the crosswalk, they're both blocked. No way to get in or out of there and tell this one with. And I don't disagree. It may only take you 10 minutes to get every kid out of there, but these people were lining up at two or three. You know. So I mean, it's, it goes, I understand, safety of the children and paramount. I got grandkids that go up there and stuff too. But safety of the citizens in that area, be it medical, a fire, whatever, is also kind of important too. And there's no way. We'd have to come through your fire lane, you get a fire truck up there, then we wouldn't be able to get there anyhow because they were lined up waiting to get out too, you know.
Well, that fire lane, I, I think that's a, I don't think you guys could do anything about that. I mean, the fire department would never, it's more important to keep it as a fire lane for the kids to run across, without question, in my opinion. The, the parking in the back is an interesting thing and again, that would be a lot of money too. I don't know if you could, if that would be a accountable thing to get some of the parking out of there and then maybe you could do something with pickups, but, you know, we're dealing with people that are just too either lazy or greedy or something, that just want to do it their way and that's it. So we're not going to come up with a perfect solution.
I think, um, parents, this generation of parents are hyper vigilant about their kids and I understand why. And so they don't want to let them out of their sight. And so picking up and dropping off, they want to do it at the curb and don't want to.
Well, I appreciate that. I, I get that.
And so that all makes sense.
But you don't need, triple parking's got nothing to do with that. You know, that's where I get frustrated. And I, I don't want you to misconstrue and think that I'm trying to blame this on the school or anything like that. I really think that the way it's set up is pretty darn smooth. I mean, there's two blocks where you could be lined up to make a left turn. And I mean, that's two blocks worth of cars and then all the way in around that circle and back out again. That's a lot of cars. It's probably more than your 27 average, right that and there. If they weren't double and triple parking, we wouldn't, or blocking it because that, that's where they need to be to make their left, we wouldn't even have an issue, but we do.
And that's, Kevin, that's, and Mike, that you look at too. That's why I asked you next, Steve, what do you see as other places in the county? You must see it somewhere else.
I think coupled with maybe something on a parent roster or Skyler to, to advise the parents that, um, we're going to be around. Um, there's really not a lot of extra we can do because there's no signs. And we don't have an arrangement to specifically help with this because we don't have, you know, we've already talked about it. Um, so about all we can do, and just making a note, um, have our patrol division be in that area and if there is somebody blocking the road, we'll, we'll deal with that because that's something we can do without signs and without any.
We can get a sign, we're talking to the county. We can get the no parking put up there. We have to go over that road.
I'm, I'm not saying that, no, Mayor, I'm saying at this point.
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
There's people that are, as, as was described, turning in yet blocking the westbound traffic from there or even eastbound. Oh, we can deal with that. That's something, that's easy to do. But without the other signs and all that, we can't do anything related to other than somebody's actually blocking the road and sitting there for an inferior time. And we can ask our guys to go over there and just go down between 2:40 and 3 o'clock and, uh, see how that goes. Again, that's hitting this because I don't.
You want to be a high, high school parking lot too, right?
Well, I've done that.
You know, it's sad. It's, it doesn't matter where you're at. It's the same issues. This is just one where it spills over to the community more.
As, as far as the enforcement center goes, we can deal with the double parking. If I have a parent that is in the westbound lane of Sixth and is stopping in the middle of the road next to another vehicle that's parked and loading, it's a violation. Waiting in line to make that turn, having your kid run through traffic to hop in, that would be a violation. Stopping, standing in the middle of the roadway, having a vehicle in the westbound lane with their signal on to turn in, I don't think that's enforceable.
No, I'm not asking to enforce that, but we're going to have to either put no parking.
Yeah, I think we need to, we're going to have to do the no parking at certain times on the south side of the street.
You know, I'm asking if we go to the no parking, you know, if we have to.
Because then it can enforce that.
I think the one consideration for that though is we need to be cognizant of that crosswalk because then we're going to have that southbound or the eastbound, that southern lane where vehicles are going to be trying to go through that. Crosswalks, uh, the guards are going to be vigilant, um, and maybe we can even get a stop sign there.
They got their hands full with crosswalk, guys, because the day we were there, they were coming out of Georgetown and trying to cut into the line to get in to pick up their kids from Georgetown. We have them coming in their directions, blocking that whole area.
Can, can I just make one really quick comment? Um, Sean, I know you had mentioned about the parking back. Uh, we did redo that, um, block top area now. So it is fully block top now. Um, my concern about that though is we, our kids use that for the playground now. And so that would, my concern is, you know, we finally have the last hold, we finally have the playground, um, using part of that, um, for parking possibly.
I thought we talked at one point that that would be the pickup, so that the only time that would be, the parents could drive in there and loop around through the school out to pick up because then it could be used as playground.
There should be some of your members of the school board, remember that discussion, Mr. Self, if you talked, there should be a couple left on that board from, from the chairman and stuff.
That they want to do what?
What they talked about. They'd make a.
I'm just throwing ideas because that was some of the things that I expressed about coming up with different solutions.
This would be a mess, I'm sure. I don't, I don't think this is that bad of a problem right now.
Well, the reason we asked you here is we wanted your input. We wanted your input. We're going to be talking about this on our retreat too, because we gotta come up with something. And we don't want to make it anywhere difficult for anybody, we have to. We, we gotta look out for kids and we gotta look out for people over there, you know, on Sixth.
Oh, what, did you ever have student pickups on the, um, west side of the building when the buses were the other way?
Yeah. It seems like when you guys did that, if you changed the buses, this is when this all problem happened. But I think you have too many buses to fit in to now and maybe we were losing that step.
It gets worse every year because every.
The buses used to be sitting on Sixth.
And if we regraded that exit to the parking lot too, so, I mean, it's.
Right, they couldn't, yeah, yeah.
Buses used to pick up on the fire lane also.
Yeah.
They did the whole circling down the fire lane when they came off the south side.
But the big problem got to be when they were coming out back on the Fifth and all the parents were trying to get in, it got to be a real disaster.
The bus might have been very effective moving into that side of the building.
Clearly, you guys are trying everything you can. I appreciate that.
Yeah, we're not asking you all right, guys. That was never the idea. I understand that part. We're just, I just want to keep you guys in the loop. I don't want your ideas, I want your input because something's going to get dumped here eventually.
And I think that's why we wanted to give the heads up that, because the county highway department has expressed an interest in working with us to either repaint lanes or put no parking in. But then if your staff complains that now where are we supposed to park, the parents in there.
The scaffolding.
We wanted to give you a heads up, so if you have to make arrangements for additional parking, you've got time to start thinking about that.
We, we work with the staff. That, that would not, that would be, this is a higher priority, might be.
Yes.
So, um, and, and once again, I just really want to encourage, you know, call me, talk to me. And I mean, like I said, I can give you a, I'll be there and continue to take numbers for you now. I can look at it. Once again, objectively, if, if someone, somebody gets a, a light bulb on, say, if they try this, let me know. And we're very willing to work with this and we want to be discovered, so.
Is there a grade level that gets picked up more than, than others at all?
I think it's pretty, pretty consistent across.
So if you like staggered the pickup times, it would probably just extend this.
The problem that I have is determining, yeah, I, I think it would be really hard to get everyone to.
Which can guard your parents come first.
You'd have those second doors open before the kid here.
They'd just wait 40 minutes.
They'd be stuck at the back of the lane.
Do you see this anywhere else, maybe other towns in the county, you guys?
Uh, I was in all the schools like this, with this kind of setup. Byron's primary building is a much larger area. They have two areas to come and go from. Their new building, I've seen their development, just down there, there's, um, middle school. That's much different, a lot bigger area. Uh, Yoda, that's a Yoda, little problem there. The two pretty good sized parking lots on the most side of the schools. No, this is pretty few.
Gibbs Elementary, Rochester has major problems.
Yeah, Gibbs, yeah, I've heard of that too.
Fall well used to. And we had to go through all this when I worked that area. They had, they came up with shutting down and making it one-way traffic for a while and then they did no parking certain hours and it's just super patrolled. I mean, it, it, it works now, but it was a lot of work.
Yeah, they now have text messages for certain days that say you can only turn right after you pick, and you have to go all the way around the neighborhood to then turn around. They're forcing people to, yeah, do the right turn only and get out of the neighborhood that way.
That'd be that, that'd be that county line you're on.
Well, that was the option I brought up.
Because it's kind of funny, the mayor and I have talked about that. Then when I saw it in your presentation, I was like, okay. Now for parents, that's a little longer drive, but guess what? It's a huge courtesy to get through the traffic.
A lot to see you pay it.
That's coming here.
I'm just feeding it to you.
That's coming here.
But you know, it, it is pretty sad because of the fact that people can't wait a couple of minutes to do their thing. You potentially could make them go all the way around, you know, I mean, it's.
Be it all the way faster.
A real headache, you know, you'd hope you'd never have to get to that point.
See, the reason I kind of thought of that, I'll give you why I thought of that. They could park all the way along from, from Morlock's old driveway. All the way around that curb, there's no driveways, they're going to be interfering with or nothing. They used to wind to Georgetown. They could sit there for half a day if they want to, nobody cared.
And just cut across the street and come to Gibbs Kids and that, you're right. They would be on Sixth, but I don't care.
But I know what would happen if we tried that, then they'd start using the neighborhood for a shortcut through there.
Yeah, they'd go down Seventh.
By your crosswalk, we're ripping through the neighborhood and turning around that way. It'd probably cause a bigger headache there than what's going on now because kids would try to cross the street there and everything. That poor lady that day, we were up there at that crosswalk, she had her hands full, let me tell you. Between parents trying to run over kids and other people trying to get through that were mad trying to run over kids and.
It would match a great way with, uh, a corner stop sign. It's still not getting off the parking, but you can get out that crosswalk.
So I just want to see what you would, if you would come up with anything else. I was never expecting you to do the enforcement. But I don't want to just drop something in your lap and say this is what it's going to be. And you're going to be with that with the parents, I tell you, they're not going to be happy. That's why I wanted, I wanted you to stay sure because I want to see what kind of input you could show on this one too.
If, if a decision is made that there's not going to be parking or it's going to be certain hours of the day, whatever is decided, we want to be good neighbors. And so, and we want our parents to be good neighbors. So if we need to work with them to change their behaviors in order to be good neighbors, we're willing to do that.
Well, if your staff can deal with the no parking, then I think that's a logical place to start.
Definitely is.
Just to go back on our previous conversation when I was at the podium, this parking issue without a contract, what are you going to do for you?
Well, I want to make sure you know what you're looking at if you do it. Somebody gets done. That's another thing I want to do.
I think, um, with the changes we made at the middle school, high school and helping parents understand what the new routine would be, it took a while. That first year was a little bit of a challenge, but now it is lockstep.
Uh, you got a little challenge there in the intertextile part of it. I notice a few of them every morning that go wide on the wrong way and out.
Yeah, but it's so much smaller than it was and it's so much better than it used to be. So they can, it can happen, so.
We were there for the day graduation and that's usually one of the big things that I see. Um, that was the easiest I went in and the easiest I went out and all my years gone.
I'm there all the time. I'm just amazed. I bet everything's been smooth, honestly. And again, I go back to your cancel, I mean, having to cancel. I, I can't thank you enough. I think you've done it at as reasonable a time as you can. I sent out a mile long email trying to explain why you had to.
How that works.
Yeah, um, yeah, I appreciate all that.
Well, we appreciate you coming, both, both parties coming tonight and talking about this. We're going to be talking about our retreat. We'll be getting back to, with some ideas here eventually. You're welcome to stay with us the rest of the time.
You know, I hit my fair share of government meetings. I'm going to go home.
All right. Get rested up so we can get those no parking up. You got something to do. All right, next one under mayor business will be 2019 CIP approving plans, specs and order and advertisements bids. The next step in the capital improvement project is to approve the plans and specifications as prepared by SEH for 2019 CIP street utilities improvements to order advertising bid. We're asking council to approve the plans and specifications and order staff to advertise for bids. We'll be opening bids on April 4th, 2019 at Penn andди City Hall. Plans are based upon the decisions previously made. You guys have read through all this. Jenna, have you got anything to add to all this?
I'm sure the question's out there of what do we do since we don't have a judge's verdict yet on things? So, we're looking to, um, have a bidding letting April 4th. Um, that lets us meet our advertising requirements for when we can get everything in the newspaper after this meeting. Um, and get everything tabulated. Um, at that point, if we still have not heard from the judge, we would be able to hold on to the bids. And I have written it in there so that we can hold them for April and May. And that gets us to the 90 days. And to be able to make a decision of, yes, we're going to go through with this or no, we're not. Um, so we would then be able to accept the bids or reject them all and decide not to go through with the project. Setting it up this way lets us get bids in hand so that we can move forward right away when we do have a verdict. So we don't lose time because we do have a, uh, three-week requirement of advertising, um, of the bids before we can accept them. If we didn't hear from the judge until May, uh, that would put us into not accepting bids until June. Once we get contracts signed, you know, we're looking at starting in July. Doing it this way, if we hear in May, in that first meeting in May, we're allowed, we can accept our bids, we can still get going in June and we'd still be able to finish in October.
September?
I, no. Unless we get a verdict before the bid letting date and then we can actually bring, I can bring the bids forward that first meeting in April. And then we could potentially get a contractor started in May and we would finish, depending on weather, in September. But it's all dependent on that, on the court there. in September, um, but it's all dependent on that, on the port there, um, I, just waiting for the judge's decision, um, doesn't put us in a good position on our timetable, um, so this does put the project out in front of the contractors, the contractors would be aware that we would have sixty days to hold their bids and, um, their bonds, uh, in, to be able to award the contract, um, so they would, they would know from the project manual that this project would likely not start until June. But again, we could still finish the project.
This is gonna be put out there, it's just one?
This is just one project.
No alternates, no nothing, this is just one straight shot through?
One straight shot project, I do have it phased into two different stages, um, working on, on Fourth Avenue first, um, getting the pipe work done, and then going on to Third and Fifth, uh, to do the pipe work, um, both areas would see construction overlap in order to get it done this year, um, but they wouldn't be completely torn up with construction going on in front of both of these.
You ever done this way before, Jenna?
This way? I've never done eminent domain, but I have rejected bids before.
Well, we have the right to reject any and all bids anyhow, okay?
Correct, and I have put it, put it on there that a project, uh, they have sixty, sixty days to reject or hold on to the bid bonds instead of thirty before.
You have done that before?
Yes.
Does that seem to bother any of the bidders?
No.
Okay.
This one's gonna be.
If you heard anything from anybody, I mean, has the judge made any wiggle anyway, or made, made an idea to anybody, or Melanie said anything, or?
No, everything got turned in, um, the last we kind of heard from the offices are that, um, he's taken both summaries and reviewing them, I know in both summaries, both attorneys cited previous historical court cases about eminent domain, so he does probably have to go through, um, both of those kinds of cases, so. Um, I think I mentioned it before, though, on our first day of the actual hearing, he did acknowledge, um, the city's schedule, so we're hopeful that that would mean a sooner than later decision.
Alright, we need a motion to approve resolution approving plans, specs, and order advertising for bids for two thousand nineteen street utility improvements, Third Avenue Southeast, four hundred block, Fifth Street Southeast, three hundred block, Fourth Avenue Southeast, four hundred through five ninety-nine. We have a motion to, uh, either do it or not do it? They'll be advertising right away, right? I mean, you begin, you got two week notice, and you gotta put it in the paper, or is it going to paper this week?
It's three weeks, so we would be looking to get it in the paper next week.
Alright. To approve. To let bids, plans, specs, and all this? Do a second.
I'll second.
We got a second, we got a motion, a second, any other questions or discussion? Josh, you ready?
No, I was just, okay, is it like the five percent, what is that for? Is that just like a?
Five percent bid bond?
Yeah.
Uh, five percent bid bond is accepted, um, it's basically that bidder's security saying that, uh, they will uphold their bids, um, and if they decide to pull out after the bid been read, um, or even after it's been accepted, that bid bond can be used by the city to help pay the difference between them and the next bidder.
Okay, so it's kind of like current is funny when you're writing those?
Pretty much, yeah.
Alright, we got a motion, a second, and we got Bill's hand up.
Sorry about, and Sean and I have talked about some backup opportunities, if this were not to go, obviously those dollars are just put in savings, uh, for a future project or this to be rescheduled, or we've talked about, we could use this summer, uh, as a backup plan to maybe do sidewalk lengths or trail lengths around the city too, so I think we're gonna be in good shape either way.
Motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Alright, next item, Public Works. Part of the capital, two thousand nineteen capital equipment plan, two thousand nineteen budget, the two thousand eleven mower was due for replacement, replacement cost was estimated at seventy thousand after trade-in, three quotes were obtained, John Deere, JCB, and Ziegler, due to warranty work maintenance time availability of a mower when needed, Public Works Committee is recommending the purchase of John Deere five forty-four K from RDO Equipment Rochester. Council action requested is to approve or the purchase of the John Deere five forty-four K mower at sixty-nine thousand seven hundred forty-one from RDO. Do we have a motion?
So.
Second?
Second.
Questions or discussions? It was a tie, you're gonna have to put them both down. It was dead, I had to feel dead heat. Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay? That passes. That takes us on to ordinance amendment, Sunday liquor. Our current ordinance reads that Sunday on-sale hours may sell between ten AM Sunday and one AM Monday. A local establishment has requested that the hours be changed to reflect current business trends with serving breakfast with drinks. Attached, please see ordinance two thousand nineteen dash one, and ordinance repealing chapter four alcoholic beverage section four twenty point zero eight subdivision three restriction on purchase and consumption, Sunday sales replacing it with some, three Sunday sales. A holder of a special Sunday license may sell intoxicated liquor for consumption on the premises in conjunction with the sale of food between the hours of eight AM Sunday and one AM Monday. Council action requested to approve ordinance two thousand nineteen one. Is this supposed to be nineteen or not?
Nineteen, I'm sorry.
Two thousand nineteen dash one as defined above. Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Second?
I'll second.
Questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next item, under general business, resolution supporting venture Southeast Minnesota diversification loan. We have been asked to consider the following resolution in support for venture Southeast Minnesota diversification loan, the fund is a result of the economic development initiatives identified in the state-funded two thousand eighteen Southeast Minnesota Regional Economic Study, which would establish a twenty-five million Evergreen revolving loan fund that is available to eleven counties in our region, excluding the city of Rochester. The attached Journey to Growth informational sheet explains the overview, eligibility, how the loan can be used, and administrative review. So, the action is requesting that we approve resolution two thousand nineteen dash, resolution supporting venture Southeast Minnesota diversification loan. Do we have a motion? Do we need a motion?
Yes, please.
I think it's a good thing, but I, I've been making all the motions, so I don't wanna keep going.
I'll make a motion, do it, stop.
We got a motion, we got a second?
I'll second it.
Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. That takes us on to mayor's staff and consult reports, tonight under mayor's report. City of Sturfield would like to send their sympathies out to the families of Marilyn Zent, Gladys Earlby, Terry Colton, and Justin Kind. Sixteenth annual Fool for Kids is set for April sixth, this is a great event, sponsored by the Kiwanis, they are looking for volunteers, prepare meals, or donate at Fairway, five dollars provides thirty-three meals, or fifty dollars, three hundred and thirty-two meals. Don't forget, there's an eggs bake, egg bake breakfast, it'll be held at the American Legion on Sunday, March third, all proceeds will benefit the eighth grade Washington DC trip. Are you cooking, Jeremiah?
Uh, no, I'm gonna be out of town.
Oh, you're gonna be out of town.
My girlfriend's cooking.
Alright. Deer Creek Longspurs, NWTF, Chapter will be holding their annual dinner fundraiser at the American Legion on Saturday, March second. Registration for the firearm safety training will be held on March second, noon, nine to noon, at the Sportsman's Club. Don't forget, the SYAA spring soccer registrations are occurring now, and they're on until April third. Community Theater is presenting Arsenic and Old Lakes, March first, second, third, check the star for more details. A winter style movie in the park will be held at Grace Church on March third at three PM, showing us the Chronicles of Narnia, the Lion, the Witch, and the Wardrobe. Don't forget, another twelve inches of snow this weekend, too. Public Works guys are chomping at the bit. Thank you, do the Public Works guys, you got a lot of work ahead of you yet, and hopefully you don't get in there twelve inches very late. That's all I've got, that takes us on to city administrator's report.
Uh, reports in your packet, um, just to add a couple things, um, uh, near the end of it, I always, uh, give reminders on the meetings, obviously the big one will be our workshop coming up, so hopefully that will work into everyone's schedule, we didn't get any additional feedback, some of you have already started providing some ideas, so that's good, we'll add those into the agenda. And then, um, there'd be a joint meeting prior to your March twelfth meeting at six o'clock, if you can all make it in, uh, with the park board, and they'll just be really the one topic, and that's on the amphitheater, um, ideas, planning, and how we wanna work together, uh, with the park board to see that project through, and the schedule and the ideas, um, in-kind things that, um, we feel we can help with, and then where you still might need the community help, and then obviously, um, the support to show that the council and the park board is working together, um, we've had a big contribution already from the community foundation, and so if citizens can keep playing a part of that, that'll be huge for us as well, and that would just be right here at the building. Um, then, um, Sean and I will kind of tag team on the next items, it all deals with the snow removal, obviously the news throughout the state, whether it's paper, media, or whatever, is, um, what we're all dealing with, and of course, our residents are dealing with the same thing, uh, the most immediate thing is, Sean and I, um, basically have had to authorize at least some use of emergency equipment, uh, the most prevalent idea, idea, or item up front will be a payloader, we have our current loader hooked up to that big blower, which comes in handy, but we have so much day-to-day work, um, with the loader itself, it's to, um, have both, uh, options available for us, probably for the next maybe two to three weeks, um, we wanted to give you an idea of the amount of money we may have to spend for leasing, that would come out of reserves right away, and then eventually, once we see what all got used, it's sometimes, I know, bar will have it get divided out into either a utility area, the biggest area will obviously be streets, um, and street maintenance, and so we just wanted to give you a heads up on that, that we would be doing that, um, Sean might see a need for a smaller type of equipment that we don't have, but we'll just play that out as we do the cleaning. Um, then the next big area, of course, is the street sidewalks and intersections, um, obviously everything's narrowing down, and, um, uh, there is limited space, in a lot of our old residential neighborhoods, or older, um, very limited space, depending on how, uh, driveways are lined up, uh, sidewalk, and a lot, and, um, I guess right now, we don't, a couple people have called, but I don't know if there's a definite want by all of you or our citizens as a whole to open up the streets, because the, the true.
True is by me. Cause if we do not, we have a two to six inch storm coming on Friday, and they're predicting winds again on Friday, and if we do not get pushed all the way back, it's gonna be closed down tight, and when it starts melting and running off, we are gonna have a mess in the streets. So my opinion is, it's gonna ruffle feathers, cause the drivers are gonna get filled again, but we're preventing, we're too early in the season, in my opinion, to not do something with it. Jimmy and I, and Bill talked earlier, I agree with, we do it during the day so they're not coming out with their cars to go to work, and they've got two hours of shoveling ahead of them, but we could have a disaster, in my opinion, if we leave them narrowed up like they are.
Traditionally, we do go around like on intersections, um, as we get closer to spring, and as Sean pointed out, try to get all those catch basins opened up, um, if there is a pileup of snow, we try to establish the clear zones again, um, as you get to intersections, and so that was, or is on the docket, uh, or will be, uh, soon, the big question is with the piles, is this balance between what Sean would like and what the citizens would have to deal with, because unless we remove.
Talk about cutting back the curb.
Yeah.
Our streets are designed for the water to drain in the curbs, we don't, yours past, we don't.
You don't, you don't need to worry about any water melting, running for a while.
But when it does.
I, I.
And so, ideally, but we just don't have the manpower for it, it would be nice to do exactly what Sean's saying, but actually move the snow and haul it out. Right now, with the way the manpower is, it would basically be redistributing it on the yards, driveway sidewalks, which then if we go that route, you'd have to give an exemption on sidewalks.
You're gonna have to.
Um, it's commendable of all the citizens that have really done a great job keeping them clean, but in that scenario, with the amount, it'd be pretty overwhelming to, to overcome.
How far out are you on some of these folks, Sean?
Oh, there's some right now that are one lane.
Yeah.
And our first goal was just to get everything opened up so that everybody can at least get out, and we've had a lot of complaints calling, I had to plow twenty feet out into the street to get to it, yeah, I know that, and obviously, we'd like to correct that in time, but we have to prioritize, and, and as long as everyone can get out is our main priority right now.
Well, I understand that, but what I'm talking about is widening, I want these guys to understand, if you're gonna be cutting back to the curb, you're gonna be moving a couple feet in some places, probably.
Oh, you're probably gonna move, and you're gonna have to set the wings back and the plow, raise them up, and put the wings back, and actually get up over the curb, and throw it back to make room for the new stuff that you're plowing to the curb.
So you're gonna be rolling a lot.
It's gonna make people mad.
So you're not gonna, it's not gonna be your river knee-deep in the end of the ground.
Yeah, but what else can you do? It's gotta be somewhere.
We're too early in the season, in my opinion, and we got snow forecasts, and they're saying for the rest, end of March, some are saying twenty inches in the next two to three weeks, now whether you can believe that or not, I'm not saying.
Thirty inches started a week ago, we should have.
Twelve of it gone, snow already eighteen, thanks. But.
Just so you guys are aware.
That'd piss me off, if it was a week later and I had to go out and shovel three more feet of snow up to my waist. You'd have the Bobcat follow behind him, clean their driveways, just keep going. God, some of it's overkill, man, you can't, I mean, people aren't equipped to get through it.
Well, nobody's gonna be equipped for this one, cause what'll happen is, there'll be some big punks falling.
Well, there's gotta be a better way to do it.
Huh?
And then there's gotta be a better way to do it, that you only do half of it then or something.
I don't know how you're gonna do it.
I mean, I don't know, I don't know how to plow snow anymore than my snow blower, so I can't, I mean, I'm disappointed that I see a public works bimonthly council report in here, cause you should've been out right now at work, and I don't understand what's going on.
You just approved us, huh?
I just don't, I'll tell you, I, I'm confused, I mean, it's, I agree, it's gotta be, we gotta blow it back, especially if it's a one-way, oh my god, um, but man, if it's gonna be to the point, I mean, I, I just feel, I know there's some people that just do not have the ability to get out of their driveway at all, I mean, if it's, if it's like you're saying.
It could be, I'm not gonna say it's all gonna be that way, but there are gonna be areas.
Yeah, there are, and there's, I've had people, the number of phone calls I've taken in the last two days, I mean, it's people, it's higher than my head, I can't, you guys have to come do something with it, all of our guys are out, and we don't have the mental resources.
I will, I will admit, you guys did an awesome job, this, I mean, I couldn't believe how open the city was at nine o'clock in the morning on Sunday, even though you had to stop plowing, I think, or the county did at one o'clock.
We pulled out in the afternoon, too.
You guys did a great job, my cul-de-sac was done before nine, I couldn't believe it, a cul-de-sac, you know, I mean, it was like, it was, you guys did a really good job, and I can't understand why people would be bitching about the snow being high, they shouldn't be able to understand that it's not ideal for you guys either, you know?
And, and it doesn't matter to me what we do, I just worry that we get this wind, with snow this weekend, and they're that narrow, they're gonna be plugged totally tight shut, and then we're right back where we were, you can't get through with anything other than the snow blower.
Well, I.
Our plows couldn't get through a lot of the streets, we had to snow blow first for a plow to get through it, cause those curbs got so high and so hard, the plows wouldn't get through.
You're gonna have to, but we are gonna have to exempt the sidewalks, it's just, you digger the curb, it's gonna be the end of the sidewalks.
I agree with that.
Cause that's where they're gonna have to blow it back to anyhow, because otherwise, like we were talking the other day, you just blow it back in the street, you don't get someone to blow it.
I think I would, do you think you could get a big part of the city done by Friday, by doing this, right?
Well, if we go out tomorrow, and they put the wings up in trucks and just run around the block, you're gonna have to make three dips around each block, I mean, we're gonna start.
I think what we need to do is put out a, you know, you're doing a pretty good job communicating everything anyhow, and I think I read it even, I, you, you put, put a message out somewhere, I saw, Facebook, or Twitter, wherever you do it, I put something out saying that you're gonna be doing that, a brief thing, and why, and then add in there that, that city, that sidewalks, can we do that? And then add in there that, that city, that sidewalks. Can we do that? Can we say that?
We gotta do something.
That sidewalks would be exemplary now. I mean, due to the unforeseen, I mean, this is not a unrealistic situation at all.
My corner is up higher than, is taller than I am. I haven't even touched it yet.
Gosh, she doesn't use that when everything's taller than me.
That's because you're the new customer. We're kidding.
No, and we just wanted your guys' input before we went and did something, because you guys are gonna get calls too.
We're gonna get calls.
And we all wanna be on the same page.
I defer to you. I think people will be more mad if the entire road is snowed in, you know, if you couldn't get out at all, so.
Well, see, that's what I'm afraid we're gonna run into. We still got all of March, and March is usually one of our, our snowiest month.
I still think we got you guys' input. I think this needs to be done during the daylight, because you don't want.
And I agree with.
You don't want to see some marvelous size of tail.
Can we do our snow alert and word it differently that we're doing this?
Yeah.
You're gonna need hours to clean this out of some spots.
Yeah, just say we're doing it in the daytime, and we're not worrying.
I think a lot of the areas, Congress aren't on the street any of them. Like our neighborhood during daylight up there.
Cheryl said we'll put the alert out stating that, so people get phone calls, text messages, letting them know so they understand why we are doing it, and I think that'll help.
Yeah, for sure, that'll help, yeah.
And post it on Facebook, our website, and put all that stuff on there that, at this time, we're going to start windrowing this back, because we have for, snow forecast and everything else.
And then city hall tends to be closed on Thursday, so we just have to click off.
I can see Ben just reading when he goes by.
Don't you already get a ditch out pretty early on Friday?
I do it tomorrow, she must go about Thursday.
It's, I, you take a day or two of complaints, people being wild, and then it's done. Otherwise, we're gonna have a month.
The problem is, Sean, it's done until the weekend. Like you said, if we get six inches, they're gonna be right back out. They're gonna be just double up with them. But I know what you're saying. It's, everybody's, they're, they're at their limit of it.
Well, and I'm wondering if we can't look at a couple, like trial neighborhoods.
Yeah, try yours first.
See what it does. Well, you know, obviously, we're gonna do intersections, and that's what we've gotten more calls on.
They were doing intersections today. Jeff was helping our neighborhood pushing back intersections.
Well, we've gotten a lot of complaints on call sacks. Uh, and obviously, those aren't a high-traffic zone, so we didn't do a great, as much job, you know, just so they could get in and out. And we'll, we'll go back and haul and clean up, and that's why we got this other loader so that we can have, now we need to make sure we have enough guys around, keep it all going, too.
Yeah, I know our entrance was narrow, but the call sack itself, they had it all out pretty quick, so. What time did you guys start plowing that day?
Four.
Huh, yeah, we got a lot done.
I didn't. I was starting at home.
At three, really?
Yeah, I couldn't get out till, get into work till ten o'clock Monday morning.
I made it out back right now.
Oh, you're at Harvard Farm?
If you do this, will you start right away at six-thirty in the morning? You'll wait till traffic gets out of town, and then we can get all that stuff put out on Facebook and stuff to give people kind of a heads up?
I'll go home and put it out on Facebook now, and I'll send the alert to go out at. No, I don't wanna do it too early in the morning.
I'd wait, I was gonna say, I'd wait for people to get to work.
Get the rush hour traffic out, send those out after break or something.
I think, I think we gotta give them a date to get the word out. We can't just put the load out tomorrow morning and then start at ten o'clock.
People gotta be prepared for it, because, you know, they don't wanna be surprised for, with it.
But it's not like they have anything to compare for. They just need to know.
Come home tonight, yeah, and have plants or whatever.
Start getting the message out, but not do the actual work.
Probably get snow coming first.
Well.
How about this, Sean?
This is why the discussion, I don't care.
Hey, how about this, Sean?
Give me direction.
If we're gonna hit this snow this weekend, how about you guys sneak it in at the same time, and might as well just plug it all up at one time?
We can't move what we have now. We had to blow what we had now to get through the first thing. It's just so much we can't move what we have now. And while we have, I don't wanna say we have a lull right now, but, and they're talking, next week, they're talking another snow Monday or Tuesday or something, too.
They're talking snow in the fall, too.
Yeah. Friday was supposed to be a little more significant one.
Yeah, also.
The bad part is we're supposed to get the wind with it. And not nothing like what we had the other day, but twenty, thirty mile an hour winds with it, and it just isn't gonna take anything now, because you have ridges for it to drift.
So what's the plan? You gonna give them a day of advanced notice, or you're just gonna give them tonight's notice?
I'm gonna do whatever you guys want me to do.
I'd do it tonight, and I'd start, I'd put it out tonight, and I'd start clearing up tomorrow sometime after eight o'clock.
I don't, okay, so my opinion is if you put it out tonight, I don't know that, that many people listen to, like, they're like, oh, like, oh, my phone's gone off, I can't park on the street tonight. I think the message.
Won't be no parking tonight.
No, but I think you would wanna do it later so that people go, so we can get that message, the, the right message out, and they'll listen to it. Otherwise, I think if it comes tonight, they're gonna go, oh, we can't park on the street tonight. They're gonna be doing.
No, but it's not, we're not, we're not saying they can't park on the street tonight, though.
Huh, no, but.
They're not even gonna answer, is what they're saying.
They're not even gonna answer.
They look and see city hall and their phones.
And they're gonna click off and go, oh, I can't park on the street.
So what, at least it's out there, so when they come home and they bitch, they come in, they say, Jesus Christ, I can't get into my driveway after work.
Oh, true.
It was already out there.
Would it help to reach out to the media?
You'd never find any media people around here.
I was, I was saying, I mean, do, do a story tomorrow, and I, we had planned one to help keep the word out.
Oh, yeah, that's, that would be great. We could reach out to them tomorrow and, and get it out there, and then.
Get it on right away at six in the morning.
I'm gonna build, I'm busy, so.
You'll have to get up early and get his tie on, so you can do. Yeah, that's a good idea, though, too. We should, the more, if you can get the news, the newspaper, the, the TV stations involved, then it looks like we did all we can to get those, that word out. They're not gonna like it, but.
All right, if you reach out to the newsrooms in the morning, they can make, you know, be down here late morning, early afternoon, you have something, maybe a little blur about at noon, and you have something out for five and six, so.
The way I see it is we're not really doing a formal snow emergency. We're doing a, a community, a nice community notification. So if we send something out tonight by nine o'clock, it doesn't affect any of them at all until.
I, I would say one for all the.
I get where you're coming from. I agree with it. That's good, but I'm, I'm thinking it should be good either.
Yeah, and if we do the news, then they, they might hear why we did it.
Well, we could do that very informative to ease the calls later, but we can still start going ahead with, and just have that out there for justification, so that people understand. No matter what, they're gonna be mad.
Well, right, that's why I think we're almost better off just, social media and our alert thing. I would call, I would call the news, because I'm here to take.
I drive around, and what people are gonna have to do about this.
What's the leg on that?
Like my, you can't get a penny for that.
No, it's not bad. It's, it's narrower, but it's.
I know I'm on the drainage, but in a couple weeks, some of this might just.
In a night, and what happens if it does before then? Or you'd be a worlder. Because right now, what we have pushed up, we got the ridges, and it's this high on the ridges, and it's a narrow street. You get in and drift off there, the whole street's gonna be totally shut off.
Okay, so what's the plan?
We're not gonna get six inches this weekend, that's for sure.
What's the plan, Sean? What are you gonna do? You doing it tomorrow?
I would just start tomorrow.
We better get the alert out. We better get the means, we're gonna get that.
Actually, we put that, there's no concern about sidewalks.
Yeah, no, I know what I can do.
Cheryl, please speak up.
What?
Please speak up.
No, it's, this is gonna be a lot.
But, but the bottom line is.
It's, it's, but it's.
It's a natural disaster, basically.
See, that's the thing. I don't know if he's gotta do all or nothing here, or half, or whatever, but if it's gonna be a lot, I mean, how do, how do we, how do you ever get it that anybody's happy?
Why don't you just do the other side of the street?
We're turning that mark side.
Don't do your side, is what you said?
Don't do my side. Just do the other side.
So we need to, we need to hurry up and get this meeting over, so he can get on and make his word.
Yeah. No, and, and try to take some comfort in what Sean pointed out initially. The trade-off is to avoid serious flooding issues in another couple of months.
We got time for that.
I'm just more. The street's accessible.
Yeah, the trade-off's gonna be if we get six inches of wind, nobody's going anywhere.
Yeah, it'd be inaccessible, yeah.
You know?
And they won't think of that part of it. They're just gonna look at the year and now that they got shoveling.
Well, it's gonna be a. Yeah. Let's, let's get the meeting, so we get the word out.
I'm putting a note right now.
Oh, okay. Give us time to get our flag.
He already had a taped up, just waiting for them.
He probably had it up.
Then the, uh, then the follow-up issue is, because we do get calls on this.
Hey, keep adding.
We've got over, um, what is it, three hundred and fifty, just under four hundred?
Fire.
Fire hydrants around town, and obviously.
They're really gonna be buried now.
We do need neighbors to chip in together. And there's probably different neighbors in respective, or respective neighborhoods that maybe take it on themselves to always try to keep clean. But this is something where it's too overwhelming, um, to get done, uh, with all this other cleaning that we're having to do. So we're asking, urging, pleading, uh, just to, in a neighborly way, get your neighbors together, clean out the hydrants on your block. It's a safety factor for your own neighborhood. It's a way to get together. It's a way to get to know your neighbor, and if a few people go out, you can get it done.
Well, I think we're all gonna get to know each other after.
All right.
You done?
That should do it. Thank you.
Finance report. You got any financial stuff to report?
Uh, nope. Everything so far is so good. We're staying in contact with everyone, so, um, just visited the auditors today, so they're all on standby for us as well.
Public Works, you got any more good news for us?
Phone calls. Huh?
What?
Phone calls. You'll just be getting lots of them. No, other than that, all we've been doing is plowing snow, so there's not a whole lot to report to you.
Oh, we had, Jason had a baby girl.
Jake.
Jake, sorry, Jake.
Oh, is that it?
Yeah, that's right. First, he had a baby girl Monday.
Congratulations.
And he came in and plowed, he came in and plowed for two hours while his wife, after her waterhead broke, and then she said she couldn't take it anymore, and he went home and took her in.
And was afraid he couldn't get down sixty-three on Sunday morning.
And Jason Welter made it in through his John Deere tractor with the blower is the only way he got in, so he drove in from out of his house with the John Deere blower.
Dedication. Keep it up. Anything else to call the works director? Waste water reports in your packet. City engineer, Jenna, you got anything else to report?
I'm not today.
The library director, oh, I have a report in there, but.
Yeah, reports in there, and she had nothing to highlight, uh, this time unless, um, Josh has anything.
No, they were just wondering the timelines for, because they have the two retirements, so they're just.
We already, we already decided that, we, probably already advertised for Pat's position, right?
Yeah, and I think when you had the meeting, we were just getting the ad book together.
They were just there, so, yeah.
This is next part. It's all in Chinese.
I got that, too.
Really?
Yeah.
It wasn't that way earlier.
Just the, uh, the top of the EDAs report came out and.
No fire chief, no chamber commerce, EDA, HRA, I can't read that.
There's just, uh.
Earlier tonight, I could.
Paperwork in there that reviewed last year and stuff, and then meeting minutes.
Good meeting, yeah. Uh, finance?
Nothing at this time.
Library, you just, you got any report, Josh?
No.
Park board?
Nothing.
Personnel?
Just that we, uh, yeah, minutes are in there, I guess, right?
Yep, a couple different meetings in there. Public safety?
I'm sorry, just gonna add just the fact that I think we advertised for the library director position, and then we'll figure out the other position after that.
All right, public safety, anything? Nothing over there.
Just a reminder for the snow emergencies, uh, after a twelve-hour violation, you get a twelve-hour violation ticket, uh, twenty-four hours passes, and we can tow, so.
We got that one on here that's gonna be gone. Is there many others, like in the U of M?
Over a year, she gets a ticket.
How do you do yours? You tag it, wait twenty-four hours?
Yeah, it's twenty-four hours we can tow after the storm, and see.
Oh, twenty-four hours, okay.
After twelve hours, you get a ticket, though.
Oh, after twelve, okay, I'm sorry. We tag it, and then we wait twenty-four, and ta, ticket it, and then wait four more hours before we can tow it. I like the way you do it here better.
Roll call.
No report, other than just that was a meeting that was tonight, so we put it in there for the public's benefit.
Long range plan? They got Fifteenth Avenue on there? That's not under long range plan? Bill?
That's the township's long range.
Still one eighty? Nothing, transit advisory committee, looks like nothing, communications. None tonight, open mic. Anybody wanna use the old link? See, council welcomes and encourages participation. Community members, please keep in mind that the council must approve, who does. And most of you have privacy rules, won't please name any of you. Please do not expect to ask from the councils here regarding concerns. We also request your consent for four minutes. Speaker to be recognized only once. This time, we ask anyone who'd like to use the point, please stand up, state your name and address. Nobody gonna use it. Looking for the last motion of the night.
Motion, turn.
We got a second. We got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?